We will bring this meeting to order for October 10th, 2023 Board Meeting. Read this, the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors encourage the citizens' participation in public meetings through in-person participation, written comments, and/or remote participation by calling 1-844-890-7777, access code 390313. Additionally, citizens may view the board meeting live in its entirety at the county's YouTube channel, the link to which is provided on the county's website. Now that we have called a meeting to order, we will... David, if you would do our invocation and follow by our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. We thank you and praise you for the opportunity to be here and for your many blessings and what you've been to us. Thank you for this weather that we've had and for your mercy and for your grace. We ask that you be with us this evening and allow us to make not only wise choices but right choices, and we'll thank you for it. And ask that you go with each and every one of us, let us return to our homes safely, and we'll thank you for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David. At this time, we'll ask for conflict of interest disclosures.
Lou, I have a... pursuant to Section 2.23-315H of the Code of Virginia, I, David Emmer, am a member of Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors and disclosing that I have a personal interest in the transaction involved in the consideration of through truck restrictions on Monroe Church Road, State Route 640, as I own or co-own a trucking company and have commercial vehicles that could use or have used and would be impacted by this restriction. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3112B1 of the Code of Virginia, I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest as the proposed through truck restrictions on Monroe Church Road affect a business, profession, occupation, or group of three or more persons, members of which are affected by the transaction. In my case, I co-own a trucking company that operates commercial trucks that could use Monroe Church Road and could be impacted by the through truck restrictions. I filed a declaration of disclosure with Officer Prince Edward County Administrator and a copy which is available for public view.
Anyone else? I also have a conflict of interest disclosure statement pursuant to Section 2.2-3115H of the Code of Virginia. I, Lou Gillum, as a member of the Board... Excuse me, as a member of the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors, am disclosing that I have a personal interest in the transaction involving the consideration of through truck restrictions on Monroe Church Road, State Route 640, as I own a business and have commercial vehicles that have used and could use Monroe Church Road and therefore would be impacted by said restriction. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3112B1 of the Code of Virginia, I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest as the proposed through truck restriction on Monroe Church Road affects a business, profession, occupation, or group of three or more persons, the members of which are affected by the transaction. In my case, I own a business that operates commercial trucks that would use Monroe Church Road and be impacted by the through truck restrictions. I have also filed a declaration of disclosure with the Office of Prince Edward County Administrator and a copy of which is available for public view. Now we'll move on to item five, recognitions. Cheryl?
Recognitions is an opportunity for the Board Supervisors to recognize achievement in our community with a focus on the accomplishments of students, employees, and our citizen volunteers who serve the county with everyone. Our first one is our Employee of the Month, Charlie Hoviston. Would you like to come up with Jeff? This is from Arco. We are proud to report that this October Employee of the Month has been nominated by a citizen. The Board will recognize Charlie Hoviston, a four-year employee of the county who works at Fortune Convenience Site Attendant. The nomination reads, "Charlie has always been a great help when I take my trash to disposal. He is always friendly and cheerful, even when faced with difficult situations. Charlie goes above and beyond to ensure our citizens have a positive experience. We'd like to thank him for his positive attitude and outstanding customer service. We make us look good, Charlie. Thank you and congratulations."
Anna Cooper-John.
I think I got it.
Dr. Park, can you scoot just a little bit closer to...
To the right?
Yeah, Jeff, you scoot just... There you go.
Okay.
Sure, I've got it for instance.
The Board will also congratulate Florence Hatcher on her retirement from the courthouse housekeeping staff with the Department of General Services. She has advocated the last seventeen years for Prince Edward County. She has been a kind and friendly presence in the courthouse, and she will be quickly dismissed.
Public participation, citizens wishing to address the Board are asked to sign up. We have one, two, three, four, and I think we've got a three-minute limit. First one is Julia.
Good evening. Julia, I'm a surgeon, 567 Monroe Church Road, Lockett District. I see on the agenda Monroe Church through traffic is going to be voted on this evening. I won't belabor the point. I've been up here a few times talking about the speed limit, about the unsafe conditions, as have other residents, but I'm just hoping that the Board does the right thing for the well-being of residents and the visitors to Monroe Church Road, which also include much traffic going to the reservoir, which I'll talk about next. I know that you have three accidents that are in your packet that have transpired on Monroe Church Road in 2018, I think in 2020 and 2021, and I would imagine that those are the reported accidents, not those that have, like most recently, taken a place... Someone speeding, and I say they were speeding because there are skid marks, they climbed the embankment in front of the Baptist Church and took down one of the concrete pylons in Monroe Church, and I saw somebody out there repairing. I have a grave suspicion that that person just backed up and left because there have been incidences on several occasions at the reservoir where parties happen. You hear engines revving and the skid marks evident of some racing going on in Reservoir Road when you witness the next day, along with, of course, I'm sure the county is well aware of this too, the debris and some of the quite nasty that is left at the reservoir where the boat ramp is that has to be cleaned up by the county at the county's expense. And I mention this because I live on Monroe Church, I walk down that road and down to the reservoir. It's a beloved place, and I certainly would hate to see it become unsightly and unsafe in future, and perhaps something could be done also there about the speed limit and also an occasional patrol, particularly on the weekends and the evenings. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Howard Armstead.
Hi, I'm Howard Armstead from Southern 6A Hill Street in Forenville, and when I was a kid, visiting my grandmother and aunt coming from South Hill, Virginia, I visited them on 200 South Virginia Street, and I learned at their knee that health is wealth. Health is as important as money. We've come through a terrible pandemic over the last couple of years, and I've done an analysis of how we did in Prince Edward County. If you... This is on all your desks, and if you go down to the conclusion, it says the COVID-19 mortality rate was 48.2% higher in Prince Edward County compared to Virginia as a whole. The 48.2% or 3% higher rate of death from COVID-19 in Prince Edward can be almost entirely attributed to the fact that the fully vaccinated population in Prince Edward County was 40% lower than the average in Virginia. So you can see here remarkable evidence that vaccinations work, and the less you're vaccinated, the more people that are gonna die. We've only had one person die of COVID in the last six months in Prince Edward County, according to the Virginia Department of Health, but we have to be vigilant because COVID can come back and new, much more deadly pandemics can arise. I've written two books about the situation with pandemics. One is Understanding COVID-19: How 500,000 American Lives Could Have Been Saved. We Didn't Do the Right Thing, The Big Boys Up in Washington. And the other book is Joe Bill Clinton: How to End Serial Pandemic Failure: HIV-1 to COVID-19. You can buy these books at the Uptown Coffee Shop, or you can get them on Amazon.com, but they explain how we can do much better with pandemics, how there were drugs and treatments that we could have used from day one of the COVID situation, that when the next pandemic comes, if we have to wait for two years, when a pandemic can be 40 times more deadly than COVID, we better be aware. As a Boy Scout, I learned to be prepared. So right now, because Mr. Jenkins is gonna buy copies of these two books from me, and I thank him very much, I'm gonna give these two books over to him, and I just wanted to let everybody know, he's paying for them. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Armstead. Next, Kenneth Jackson.
Any questions about what I presented? I think you can read it and get the picture. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Armstead. Next, Kenneth Jackson.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors members. Administration of the county. I'm here, one, to say I'm glad the flag issue is over. I believe when Mr. Stiff was on the Board, as well as you, Mr. Bill, when you took over, I told you I could not even agree with you on that because it was a mistake made here in the county office building. When you give out a permit, you inspect what you expect, you follow up. This was a waste of time, even your Board of Zoning appeals. Let's make sure that things are in place that this doesn't happen again. Whoever's supposed to sign these permits needs to be the one that signs them. If they're not authorized, they don't touch it. This costs the county a lot of money, and, like I said, I couldn't even side with you on it. The other thing, real quick, is Monroe Church Road, because I go down there too, and I've almost been blown off the road, hate to tell you, but by residents. Some of your residents aren't the nicest people when it comes to driving. I'm getting old, so I drive slow. Speed limit? Check with VDOT because of how many houses they have, VDOT will probably put up a 25 mile an hour speed limit, but you have to have people there to enforce it. That brings my next thing that really bothers me, and I have very seldom criticized the Sheriff's Department, and we have no forum really to discuss it but here, but you guys need to understand this. There have been two investigations, haphazardly messed up, that even a first-year criminologist, you know, 101, would have noticed. We had a person here speaking on drug house issues whose name got back to the person they arrested by our sheriff, and this person will back me up on it. That's a dangerous thing. You put a bullet on people's back. We gave an official police report, a felony official police report, and the Commonwealth attorney had to make the sheriff do his job. Thank God we got someone else to back us up when it comes to us being protected. You guys need to look into this. I know the sheriff is a constitutional office, but nobody's job is safe. This was just unprofessional, and I love law enforcement when they're in the right and they're doing the right thing, but don't... I called the police one time, well, me and my neighbors, because someone was shooting across the highway. Why would the officer go over there and say, "People on High Rock reported you"? You don't know who you're talking to, and you want to know why we don't help? That's why people don't want to get involved. Please look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Next, Amici Hicks, please.
Good evening, Board members and administration and all the guests, and congratulations to all the award winners and recognition that was given this evening to everybody. Tonight, I just want to speak to... Is Scott? Oh. My glasses are back there. With the issues with the grass that's growing along the highway, even the medium in the highway, it obscures so bad. You know, when I'm pulling out and others, you know, pulling out in the highway, I'm getting people telling me and I'm telling them the same thing, you know, it's ridiculous. You know, you have to almost get out into the lane to see what's coming, and the secondary roads or the highways, you know, the secondary roads, I guess you would call them, are terrible. Like on Sandy River Road going through there, all the way up to Green Bay Road, oh, it's ridiculous. Animals run out in the road, you don't see them until they're driving your car, you know, and it's ridiculous, you know? So hopefully, something can be done. I understand at the state level there was cuts made, but hopefully, there could be something the county can do even to help. We cut our own grass, really, on High Rock Road. We get out there with the lawn mowers and just cut it ourselves, and so do some of our neighbors on 460 side over by Ms. Oaks over there, they cut it, you know, as well. But hopefully, that can be done, you know, so we can drive safer, you know? And also, tonight, the person that Mr. Jackson was speaking about, the issue that leaked that came back to the issue of the drug house, the person was me that they spoke about, you know? And that, I was fearful, yeah, but I trust God, you know, because, of course, when you... My mother and dad taught me, when you speak the truth, you know, you will prevail, the truth will prevail, you know? But anyway, it did get back to the person there, and they tried to make my name mud, I guess you would say, and all, but anyway, it should never have gotten back through the police department, back to them, and it did through the Sheriff's Department, that I do know. So I'm hoping that something is done, and I'm hoping that they are listening even tonight, and this would never happen again, okay? So thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. We have anyone that called in? No? All right. Get the list. Supervisors' comments. David, we'll start with you.
Just once again, thank you all for being here.
Jerry?
I follow Supervisor Emmer. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your support.
Yep, thank you for your support and holding us accountable. We appreciate your input, and whether we agree with you on every detail or not, you know, it is important to be able to have a dialogue, an open dialogue, and be able to respectfully hash out the details because often two things are true at once, and being able to work together on complicated issues is a valuable thing. So I appreciate your time being here tonight with us. Thank you.
Patty?
I would like to just second what they said is important for the public to come out, voice your concerns, and I believe before Harrison says we may not always vote the way that you do of what you expect us to, but I appreciate the respect that we can respect each other in this, and we respect.
I echo those sentiments for sure, and, you know, a lot of times, things that we have no idea, issues arise from the public comment, and we'd no less without you, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your attendance. Thanks for your participation.
Good evening. Thank everybody for being here. Hope we have a good meeting and everything go good. Thank y'all for showing up.
And I'm glad to see everyone tonight, too, and again, what we've all said, we always like to hear comments, things that you've seen, and we'll do our best to address them. Thank you again for being here. Moving along, consent agenda. Everyone has read, studied?
I'm going to go and accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Start with David.
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Community partner updates, Mrs. Barbara Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Gillum, Mr. Stanley, and Board members. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening. I wanted to provide you a few updates around what is going on in the school currently. It is homecoming week, believe it or not. It is homecoming week, which means that we have finished the first nine weeks of school, the first quarter. With that, parents can expect report cards on the 19th of October, so I know some of you have a vested interest in some of the children and/or grandchildren at the school, and so report cards will be distributed by the 19th. It is amazing how quickly the time has gone. My point number two, I had to number these to keep myself on track. Point number two, the construction grant has been released. It was released September 29th, and so that's very exciting. We talked about the construction grant at one of the special meetings when Mosley Architects presented. We have started working on it, we, meaning the administration for Prince Edward County Public Schools. Once we finish, we will share it with Davenport, Mosley, and of course, the county administrator for any tweaks and/or additions. We expect to have this ready by November. There are a few other things that I want to share. I want to share that our agriculture students, as well as our culinary arts students, hosted... Well, that's not true. They did not host. Dr. Chip Jones and Region 8 hosted the state superintendent here... here at Prince Edward County Public Schools a few weeks ago. I want to brag on our students, however, because they didn't host it, but they provided the decorations and the meal for the meeting. And so I want to brag on our CTE students for all that they are doing. In addition to that, I want to share how our CTE programs are growing. Of course, we have nursing, we have auto mechanics, culinary arts, we have CAD, computer assisted drawing. And that is now worth a college credit because we have a CAD program that is a dual enrollment program. We have cybersecurity, agriculture, vet science, small animal care. We have economics and personal finance, which is required for graduation. We have electronics and horticulture. And we added several new agriculture classes last year to our program of studies. So again, this gives me an opportunity to brag on our students. I'd also like to share with you some of the vacancies. It is the first semester. We still do have vacancies. We have 12 vacancies currently. As I shared with you before in some of our previous meetings, 12, or let's see, nine, 10, 10 of those, 10 of the 12 are in special education. Special education has been our area of concern this year. We have one in history, but the rest are in special education. We are working with another consulting firm, Global Recruit, on filling those vacancies. So those vacancies will go through first semester, but we'll be able to fill seven of those vacancies for second semester. In addition, I'd like to share that a new grant has come out for electric buses. If you remember, was it last year or the year before? We applied, we did not get the grant. But there is a new grant out and we are going to apply for that as well. Again, we'll only need one or two electric buses because they will be local. But we are going to apply for that. I'd also like to share, Dr. Pride, this is specific to one of your meetings or your last town council meeting. I was asked if we received, we, Prince Edward County Public Schools, received all of our HVAC monies from ESER. And at the time, I was not sure. I thought we had, but I wanted to double check before I made a comment. In fact, I did check and we have received all of our HVAC monies. We received a little over $300,000 actually. And we used that to replace most of the HVAC throughout the middle school and CTE and the high school. Of course, we didn't spend that money on the elementary school as we expect renovations to occur with the elementary school. Then the last thing that I'd like to share, and I will be free to answer any questions that you may have. Moving forward, I want to make sure that everyone knows about chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism means that a student has missed 10% of the academic year. So if we have 180 days, 10% of that they have missed. It is a community problem, a community issue. I need the help of everyone in this room, everyone in this county to make sure that children are getting on the bus or that parents or guardians, neighbors are bringing children to school. They cannot learn if they are not in the seats. And that's something that I, I am saying over and over again at any meeting, every meeting that I possibly can. One person asked me today, do we know exactly why our children are not coming to school? What is the root of that? And I had to say honestly, no, I do not know. We are investigating whether it's a certain group of children. Are there any factors that impacted? Is it free and reduced students? Is it a particular ethnicity? Is it, what is it? I don't know. We are looking, we're looking at our data very closely to see if we can pinpoint. Is it health concerns? We simply cannot pinpoint it at this time. So I, I say to you now, I say to everyone in the audience and everyone watching, please, please make sure that children are getting to school. And we have our campaign sore. Show up on time, every day and ready to learn. Every day, on time, ready to learn. So that is what I'd like to leave you with, that that is our primary focus of course curriculum and instruction and continued improvement. But I want to make sure that I make that note. Yes, Dr. Pride?
Dr. Johnson, I have two questions. But let me address the first one to the chronic absenteeism. What, what would you assess the rate right now for this nine weeks? Percentage wise? What would you say it is?
Dr. Pride, I'm going to have to get back to you with that to tell you the percentage. To be perfectly honest, what I can tell you is our attendance is going up. Our attendance rates are going up. But that doesn't really matter if we have students who are still missing these days. So I would have to get back to you with that current rate.
Okay, the other question is relevant to spay it.
Yes.
You said that 12 vacancies, 10?
Our special education.
How many at each school?
Four at the elementary school, five at the middle school, one at the high school. We actually, in order to make sure that all of the schools were covered with special educators, we actually had to move one person from the high school because they were fully staffed for spet. Get to move one from the high school to the middle school to make sure that services were being carried out for all the children. So what we're anticipating is once we hire these new people, that we'll be able to move a person back to the high school.
And, and, and special ed students have distinct needs.
Yes, ma'am.
All of those are being met? I mean, with this shortage, you still are taking care of all of their needs?
They are still, needs are still being met. It has been particularly difficult because some of these vacancies, two of these vacancies are adaptive. And so our staff members, those who are there are spread thin, to be perfectly honest.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Absolutely.
Uh, Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Just a question or two on the students that are absent. I know of some parents that's been hesitant about sending the students because they're afraid of the COVID thing again. Letters going home, in response back from the parents explaining why the kids aren't there and/or are they doing their lessons online?
So there are several different categories. For students who are not attending school but are on our rosters, those students do receive letters, three days, five days, seven days. And we also have a letter that we include on the seventh day from the Commonwealth's attorney explaining the ramifications of that. So those are the students who are currently attending in person but have missed those days. That's when letters go out, three, five and seven. Now, there are those parents who have chosen to homeschool. That's a separate category. And those, those parents have submitted outlines of what they intend to teach, requests that they intend to teach. And they are expected at the end of the school year to provide us with grades and updates on how the students have progressed throughout the year. Those students are not the students that are counted in this chronic absenteeism number. The students that are counted are those who are on our rolls and are in person.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What is our accreditation status at each of the schools?
Currently, each of our schools are accredited with conditions. Our elementary school, as the Farmville Herald has noted, would be fully accredited for the third year, except for chronic absenteeism. That's why I continue to say this is so important on many, many levels for our schools. As far as our middle school is concerned, our middle school has made significant progress. If you, and I can come back anytime if you'd like to do this presentation. I and my staff are willing to come back to do it. But if, we have red, yellow and green, if you will. Red being you didn't make the number, the target number. Yellow means you're approaching. And green, and you have made some progress. And green being you're right there. The short answer is for the middle school, they have gone, they had quite a few reds and they have erased one or two of those reds and moved them to yellow. So they are progressing well. I expect them to have very little, if any, red this year, which is a huge accomplishment because our middle school has always been the school that has struggled the most. So that's a huge accomplishment. As far as our high school is concerned, we are red in chronic absenteeism and mathematics.
Thank you.
Dr. Johnson, I know that a, a personal conversation worked well with the parents and I. From my memory, someone was assigned to work in this area last year. And evidently, it didn't work. Is somebody personally talking to these family members about the absenteeism?
Guidance counselors currently and registrars are currently making those phone calls. We do have a position posted for a, I believe it's a student support specialist. And so please, if you know anyone who may be interested, please direct them towards our website. That person would work directly under our Director of Student Services, or excuse me, Support Services. And that person would be responsible for making phone calls, doing court paperwork when someone is not being compliant, making home visits, et cetera, doing all of that legwork. We have currently pulled someone from the high school to work with us to help us on a central level so that we are not missing students. But overall, that position is posted. So again, if you know somebody who might be interested in that type of position, please direct them to our website. And that is not, that position is not counted in our vacancies. It's a new position. So the numbers that I gave you around vacancies, that new position is not counted in, in that. I gave you teacher positions.
Yes. Thank you again.
But yes, phone calls are being made, letters are being sent.
How is teacher retention this semester? Is it strong?
Yes, yes. We overall are doing well, overall. Teachers, I will say, are, it's the end of the first semester. So you start to get weary at the end of first semester. You hold on until Thanksgiving. You get rejuvenated, you come back for three weeks and then you have Christmas break. I mean, that's the cycle typically of a teacher. So they are getting tired. They're particularly getting tired. We look at absenteeism not only from a student perspective, but also from a staff perspective. So when we have staff members out, we do have subs on our sub list. But oftentimes, subs, substitutes work when they want to work. That's, that's the benefit, I guess, of being a sub. You can come when you want to. We have at least 23 people on our sub list. We just interviewed and hired, or hiring today, nine more. So we have what I consider to be a robust sub list. But those people don't come every day and some choose not to come really at all. So that means teachers have to cover classes. And that does impact the weariness of the teacher at this point in time.
So have you actually lost any teachers so far this year?
No, I've lost some staff members, but not teachers. But they are weary, they're tired. And I, I need to add a shout out to my teachers. My teachers are working exceptionally hard. So I want to make sure that that is, that is clear.
Of course.
Just a comment, the staff retention is a challenge for everyone.
Yes, thank you.
That's nothing new. One of the things, you talk about your substitute, do you random drug, do you drug test?
Our substitutes, uh, yes, fingerprint and drug test.
What about full, full time?
Full-time staff?
Yeah.
Drivers, bus drivers. So let me pull that back. We drug test and we'll do it randomly, drivers. We fingerprint all staff. So we don't drug test substitutes. I think, forgive me, we do drivers though.
Is it specific, is there a reason why not?
I really?
Especially with the legalization of marijuana?
You know, that?
I mean, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to teach in the classroom, teaching my child under the floor, hide up.
Thankfully, I, I just don't think that's been addressed in the legislation at this point in time. I mean, there are clear statutes around people who are able to teach, people who are able to get a license. And that, that all revolves around convictions and felony convictions specifically, any conviction that having to do with a child, et cetera. But?
Just something to think about.
I don't think that has made it to the legislation at this point in time. And I'm going to look to my colleague, Dr. Jones, has that made it to legis? No. I need to write that down.
Something to think about.
Yeah. But we do actively, that we, before employment, we test drivers and then we randomly test drivers, bus drivers, van drivers. Any other comments? Questions? Again, thank you very much. I look forward to the next time I get to speak with you. Oh, you have, each person should have at their place a flyer handout that says, "Thank you." It says, "Did you know?" Because we are now really actively trying to change the narrative. We are doing really solid work. We are making improvement and our children are proud and our children want to come to school. So with that in mind, we decided to do a "Did you know?" Because we're not sure that everybody knows all the great things, small things that are happening, small and big things, that are happening at Prince Edward. And we wanted to make sure that we start to toot our own horn, quite frankly. We are so accustomed as educators, just doing the work. We keep our heads down and we do the work. And what we don't do is take the time to toot our horn and say, hey, this is what's really going on. So we are actively trying now to change the narrative around Prince Edward County because it not only benefits us, it benefits our children, it benefits us as a county. So I left that just for you. Did you know? Did you know that there's Spanish at the elementary school? Or safety patrol? Or some of the other things that, that are listed there?
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next, Chip Jones, Farmville Area Chamber of Commerce, please.
Good evening, Mr. Stanley. I almost called you Mr. Stamy because I ought to be at a Cumberland County Board of Supervisors and members of the board. I'm Chip Jones. I'm the chairperson of the local Farmville Area Chamber of Commerce. As I told you last year, which includes Cumberland County. I happen to be the superintendent for Cumberland County Public Schools. But I'm in my last year's chair of the chamber. Just to give you an update of all the happenings that's been happening in the chamber since I spoke to you last year, we've conducted, conducted 10 membership luncheons featuring speakers on various industries, addressing relevant topics and providing the chamber and community members with a platform for learning and asking questions. The most recent luncheon that was held on Monday was, was on artificial intelligence. Collaborated with Central Southside Community Hospital to organize six Lunch and Learns, health series sessions addressing critical health issues in our area. Successfully completed Leadership Farmville 23 with 11 graduates, featuring six sessions covering local government, healthcare, the arts, leadership, law enforcement and economic development and education. Facilitated visit with three elected officials, Attorney General Jason Meara, Senator Mark Warner and Delegate David Reed. Hosted the 17th Annual Center, the Chamber Central Golf Tournament at the Manor Golf Course with participation from 19 teams. Organized six businesses after hours, offering networking opportunities for our members and showcasing local businesses. Conducted eight ribbon cutting ceremonies to celebrate new business openings, relocations and promoting them on social media and the Farmville Herald. Partnered with the Small Business Development Center to host multiple Rise and Shine Entrepreneurship Events, bringing together local business owners and featuring various speakers. Collaborated with Letterpress Communications to up, update the chamber website, which you can visit. Currently working on developing a new local directory and membership guide to distribute to local colleges, hotels and newcomers to the area. Air upcoming events, hosted a, hosting a Lunch and Learn on Fraud in partnership with hosting a luncheon learn on fraud in partnership with Benchmark Community Bank at the Woodlands, which is tomorrow at noon. You can come join us, just go online and register. On November 1st, we're partnering with the Longwood Small Development Center and Piedmont Health District to host a luncheon learn on the next step with your business and federal grant opportunities. This will take place at noon at the Robert Rusa Moten Museum. The next membership luncheon will be held on November 13th, featuring Steps Incorporated, who will discuss the developments of the Madelins House, House Project. Partnering with the Town of Farmville and the Farmville Downtown Partnership for the Holiday Tree Lightning, which will happen on November 19th at 6:00. The event will include live music, food, and nonprofit participation. The Holiday House Tour is scheduled for December 9th from 9:00 to 2:00, featuring eight houses and two churches. You will get to see a showcase of beautiful homes. Preparing for the inaugural Farmville Flower and Garden Festival on May 4th, 2024, at Riverside Park in downtown Farmville from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00. We will celebrate all the things botanical and ongoing vendor recruitment and the anticipation of attracting visitors from local areas. Planning the Leadership Farmville Youth Summit in the spring of 2024, where 60 local high school students from Prince Edward, Fuqua, and Cumberland participate in a day focused on developing their entrepreneurial skills. And as always, please follow us on social media for regular updates. And thank you for letting me speak to you this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next, Jake Berman, Farmville Downtown Partnership.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about what we've done. I know we came before you guys, 2023 work plan that we presented. That plan summed up our three to five year transformational strategy, along with a specific scope of work that we hope to achieve through the end of 2023. We, FDP is an accredited Main Street member. We send out a weekly electronic newsletter. We've produced a map and a directory of the downtown businesses, which we hand out mostly at the Prince Edward Visitor Center, but it is also available at Longwood University as needed. We work with Longwood Communications Class to develop fundraising ideas for downtown Farmville. We received three well-produced plans. We are currently working with an intern from Longwood Communications Department on a social media plan to improve our social media communication. We have three separate, or four separate committees. One of our committees, the Organization Committee, managed a successfully, successful community fundraising plan. The goal was $25,000, and we got to $22,000. We had a couple of large donors, but the vast majority of our donors gave $225. So we had a lot of buy-in from a lot of different community members on this. The Organization Committee also, some other accomplishments, existing policies and procedures to create a stronger organization. Members of this committee and the Economic Vitality Committee created a database of properties and businesses which have been integrated into our user-friendly website. We have Travis Mason and Paul Hoffman to thank for those projects. The Promotions Committee, this committee has supported the Fireworks After Dark event and developed and implemented Rock the Block, which was very successful. There were somewhere between 800 to 1,000 attendees for that. So it was a big event. We initiated and established a subcommittee of retailers who would support downtown sales opportunities. A subcommittee is chaired by Sendari Morgan and has hosted several downtown sales events, including a Mother's Day special, in-store scavenger hunts, and in-store Easter egg hunt. They have supported investor, and invested in fireworks after dark and Rock the Block and holiday promotion efforts. The committee is currently focused on Halloween costume contest, and they will be focused on other holiday events throughout November and December. The Design Committee has, this group has two projects in process. They've received a $50,000 matching grant for facade improvements in a downtown district. A design booklet will soon be in process, and the committee will soon announce an opening date for applications to be submitted. This is a two to one grant, so FDP invested $25,000 of in-kind services and cash to this project. Property owners will be asked to do the same. Maximum grant funds awarded per project will be $10,000, and this requires the property owner to match that with $5,000 in funds. Concept designs have been created for High Bridge Plaza through the VMS Design Services available to FDP. The committee will be taking with the town and High Bridge to develop these ideas to look for more grant funding as well. The committee also replaced the worn mural street banners with new banners of the same design and worked this summer to encourage downtown stores to place and take care of planters along the street. The last committee I'm going to mention is the Economic Development Committee. It secured $25,000 financial feasibility study for two downtown buildings, and has worked diligently to secure and submit a shovel-ready project for grant funding through the Industrial Revitalization Fund from DHCD. That grant totals up to $1 million, which we'll be applying for soon. Held a well-attended social media workshop in the spring. This workshop was funded by Longwood SBDC, and presentations were made by Letterpress. We're starting to work on our 2024 work plan, so a lot of things are moving in the right direction for downtown Farmville. And our board retreat is in October, where we're going to kind of finalize the plans for 2024. And I believe we have some T-shirts to pass out from Rock the Block. We had a handful left over, so figured it'd be a good, a good present for you guys. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Appreciate your coming.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would you have an extra? Thank you.
A large. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're going to rock the block.
Thank you all again. We appreciate the shirts. Scott Frederick, Howie Matters.
Scott, you got shirts?
I was going to say, that's a tough act to follow.
Any hats, Scott?
All I have for you tonight is a smile. But good evening, board and county administration. It is good to be here. I wanted to start off first by introducing Brian Locker to everybody in the room. He's the new Assistant Resident Engineer in Farmville. He'll be handling the land use items that I was struggling my way through for the last nine or 10 months, but happy to have him. He's a great guy to work with, and I'm sure you guys will enjoy getting to know him better.
I'm better than a teacher.
Yeah.
Get your number before you leave, please.
If you guys could write down your sizes, we could get your sizes. The, speaking to the grass comment from earlier, this year we followed our best practices manual almost exactly on the cuttings, which is, we cut the primaries three times, we cut the secondary roads twice, and we cut gravel secondary roads one time. And then we can do a safety cut at any time at an intersection to improve site distance. And we did do that on 460 and a couple other locations. There's a lot of science behind the timing of it, and we tried to follow it very closely this year. It's the first year that we've only cut the primary three times. And the number of work orders we received for, for grass complaints showed that we mowed less. So just wanted to tell you guys about that. I'll speak more on Monroe Church Road, which also came up in the public comment, I believe, later in our public hearing. As far as routine maintenance work and, and our other road work, the rural rustic projects this year is Briary Way Road, Falkland Road, Old Oak Road. We've gotten all the drainage work and pipe replacements done. We've also put the base stone down, but it looks like colder weather is moving in. The last few, last few mornings have been in the high 30s. So makes it tough to, to put the surfaces down when we get an early cold weather, cold mornings like we've been getting. So there's a good chance, unless it warms up for a couple weeks, we're going to have to wait till the spring to shoot the surfaces. But I'll keep you guys updated on that. We, we're finished mowing our secondary routes for the year. We completed that cut several weeks ago, and we're starting our primary mowing on October 15th. We're going to be cutting the four lanes, 360 and 460 with VDOT forces, and we're going to cut the rest of the primaries with a contractor. Contractor's already out picking up trash ahead of his cut, so you'll be seeing that going on throughout the county. Typical fall and winter time work is to cut the limbs back. So we've been running our buzz bar and our boomax. You'll see a lot more of that in the coming months. Also, as far as brushing limbs go, we've been daylighting our signs. It's where you cut the tree branches that are trying to creep out in front of your signs back. Other things we got going on just throughout the county, pipe replacements. We're working on clipping our shoulders and, you know, doing ditching work, making sure our drainage work, drainage is working properly, and cleaning out pipes along with that ditching work and tree removal. Something a little bit out of the norm that we've done is on 460 at 735 Piscata Church Road, we widened the radii out on both sides of that intersection. It was constantly getting rutted out there. A lot of trucks coming and out. And we're going to follow that work that we've already done up with another layer asphalt to smooth it all out, make it look good. We're working on a site distance project at 654 and 652. Go down 15 and turn on, right on Cabbage Patch, and you go back in there. That's where that intersection's at. So we got, we got a lot of work done there with, with that. And there's a power line and a few more trees to take down. So we're having a contractor take those last few trees down, but it's really going to open that site distance up at that intersection. And then something that was in the minutes from last month that we still haven't got is a, a tree near Rattler's Branch that had fallen and got cut back, but it's still behind the ditch. So I think Mr. Americk brought that up, but we're going to get that done hopefully this week. But that's all I came prepared to talk about tonight. I can take comments from you guys now on just routine things, and then I think the public hearing might be next on the agenda.
Worsham Road.
Worsham.
And Red Shaw.
Yes, sir. I'm glad you brought that up. I've talked to Robin Atkins with the Town of Farmville, and we're supposed to have a meeting with the property owner tomorrow to, to talk about a right entry easement agreement for, for that work. So I'll, I'll keep you posted after we have that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple items. 2176 Morris Creek Road. I haven't been over there, but I had folks call me. Evidently, they met a vehicle and hit a big hole, damaged a car. And they would like to get that hole fixed.
Okay. That's the closest mailbox to it is 2176 Morris Creek Road?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Also, this afternoon, I noticed at 6505 Forks Road, somebody lost a couch in the road.
Okay.
And it's laying in the ditch. I don't know whether that's your department or, or the county's department.
Is Jeff Jones still here?
I was hoping, hoping to catch him before he left.
If he'll volunteer to get it, I'll let him. If not, we'll go get it. 6500. You, 6500, what road did you say that was on?
5 Forks.
5 Forks, okay.
Last little thing, Abilene and Arlington Heights Road. They did trim the bushes back looking towards Charlotte County. It's real nice for a car, but if you're in a tall truck, let your guys pull the truck up there and look that way, and then they can tell them how many bushes to cut off. You can't see the cars coming from Charlotte County.
Okay.
They just, they've done a good job, but they need to trim back just a little more.
Darlington Heights at Abilene?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
And I will tell you, the fellows that mowed 5 Forks did an excellent job this time. They finally cut that Johnson grass down.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll pass that along to, to the mowers.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have?
It's got some dead trees still. There's one right at the corner with Prospect Road. It's dead, a big oak right there. Just soon as you cross, soon as you cross over the rails of trails on the left-hand side. And there's one on, I guess that's going to be hard times. If you're coming from the landfill and coming down the hill, just soon as you cross the creek right there, a big oak that's dead, the limbs are falling already out of the road.
Okay. All right, I'll take a look at those. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Scott. We thank you.
All right. I'm sure it's the public hearing for...
We held a public hearing last month, so tonight it's just, the board had tabled action. So if you can stick around, we'd love to, I'm sure the board would love to hear from you.
That's going to be the next item. Sarah, you go, Sarah, you, you rest a while. With the wind we've had lately, it's been very fortunate we haven't had as many trees as we've had.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So at its September meeting, the board held a public hearing prior to considering through truck restrictions on Monroe Church Road. The minutes of that meeting are contained in the minutes of the board meeting, just to point that out in case anybody wants to reference back. And so following the public hearing, the board tabled action pending additional information, such as the accident history of the road and a potential remedy for the concern of site distance on the proposed alternate route at the intersection of Route 696 and US 460. And so my show and tell for tonight is our esteemed resident engineer, who would be the expert on the road and be able to address the site distance and more accurately discuss the accident history. And then the attachments are also the same information that was provided to you last month regarding the action on Monroe Church Road and the VDOT requirements for such. So I'll let Scott address those issues.
Thank you.
Good evening again. So I did work with Sarah offline, and I reviewed the meetings from the public hearing. And I did pull the accident data, and it was similar to what Sarah had, but I didn't go back as far as 2018. But I found two crashes that occurred on Monroe Church Road. One was at the intersection of 696. The police report said it was failure to yield right of way. I forget exactly. One driver pulled out in front of another driver and didn't have the right of way. And then there was another one. It was a single-vehicle accident, failure to maintain lane. It was actually on Monroe Church Road. I think one was in 2020 and one was in 2021. The thing that struck me about the meeting minutes was that the three speakers, two of them requested the speed limit to be lowered further from 35 to 25, and the third speaker asked for more speed limit signs that said 35. But nobody that spoke at the public hearing actually requested a truck, through truck restriction. I did pull the traffic data, and in 2019, the road had 400 vehicles per day. In 2021, the road only shows having 270 vehicles a day. I don't have the 2022 numbers yet. They haven't been published. But I, I thought that was funny that it dropped in volume. But that also kind of did happen during COVID with a lot more telework and, and just less people going to less places. less people going to less places. So I, I thought that even though it showed a drop, that could be very accurate. But in either year, it didn't give a percent of trucks for the, for the traffic data. And normally that's a sign that it's so little that it's not counted. Like the counter can keep track of trucks and cars and it wasn't, wasn't posted either year. So it leads me to believe it's very low. And normally when it's that low, any truck that is going down that road, like with Sandy River being there, it could easily be deliveries to and from there. Like that even if you were to restrict it, those trucks would still go down that road. And I was out at the reservoir and I noticed a dumpster out there. So there would be a trash truck going to the dumpster. There are certain vehicles that even if you restrict trucks, will still go down the road. So it's, it's so low that I don't know if posting it would, would actually result in any kind of change. And when you, when you do restrict trucks, you restrict like single unit vehicles, tractor trailers and combination units. So it's basically anything that's a commercial vehicle, it wouldn't affect smaller pickup trucks, towing trailers and things of that nature. So it's all stuff to just consider. But Ms. Merserjin was right that, that the accident is only recorded if there's a police report. If, if somebody runs out of the road and then drives off afterwards, I don't have a way to keep track of that. But the other person that spoke clearly pointed out that residents are speeding. I, I can't confirm or deny that. But I, I have noticed a trend that everybody has talked about speeding or the concern seems to be speeding. It doesn't seem to be truck traffic. So, you know, just taking all that into consideration, if the board was looking for my recommendation, I would recommend taking no action because I think the, the trucks that may go down that road probably need to. And if you were to limit them and make them go down Green Bay, you know, I don't know that that would change anything. The, the two intersections, I think it was brought up at the one, at the public hearing that some trucks prefer Monroe Church Road due to the intersection alignment down there. There's ample site distance down there. At the Green Bay intersection, you kind of have to get out to the median to look back at westbound traffic. And if you're towing a long trailer, I see how that could be a challenge. There's plenty of site distance there too. You just have to jockey and make it in stage. It's a staged movement whereas at Monroe Church Road, there's further site distance to plan your move better for a bigger vehicle. But yeah, like I said, I would recommend just leaving things the way they are now and giving truck drivers that choice. So I don't, I don't know if you need, have any further questions for me, but that's, that's all I came prepared to share on the subject tonight.
Got one question.
Yes, sir.
Where's 16 foot? Can y'all make it a little wider?
The 16 foot where?
The Wilford Road.
Oh.
Place the 16 foot. Can y'all cut your bank back and make it wider so it'd be safer to get there?
So Monroe Church Road being 16 foot isn't, it doesn't really make it special because we have a lot of secondaries that are 16. We're, we're currently widening Abilene in a, we're being strategic about it with the funding that we have available. And the, as, I've talked about it as a board, our, the next road we were going to strategically do that to is Maheron Road. And certainly we could talk about doing that. There are ways to do it. It's just costly and we have a limited budget to work with.
If you can make it wider.
Right.
You with that area, you know, from where you turn to go in the reservoir, all the way up to where you get to where the teepee's on. That area, some places it's kind of narrow. There's no, no shoulder.
Yes, sir.
Just a ditch.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with that area. If we were to widen it, I would assume some speed will increase.
Yeah. At least you have wider road, forty feet.
Does the board still need me or any, any other questions?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Couldn't, couldn't they require trucks to go out the Monroe Road entrance instead of the, the Green Bay Road? Because that seems to be the problem. Or could y'all improve the site distance for, from, for the westbound? I think it's 460 westbound if you come, where the problem is. Am I right, David?
Correct. That's where the.
Yeah, that's, that's something we are looking at is what we could do to, to fix the, I won't say fix, but to increase site distance.
Site distance from the west, 460 westbound.
There's a vertical curve there. Some people call it a hill when you're looking back that way. That until you get out there, it's downhill the way you're looking. And that's, it'd be, we, we need to, we need to do some survey work to figure out if there's anything that could be done.
I think it would make, I mean, to me, if someone went there with a 53-foot trailer, if you go into the median, the trailer's going to be in the, in the westbound, eastbound lane. So it'd make, it would behoove us to go, for them to go through Monroe Church until we can, until you can do that and make that approach. Maybe that'd be, can be an option, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, that's just food for thought.
You're asking them to get rid of the hill.
That's right. Absolutely.
I don't think that's, like I said, I recommend taking, I recommend taking.
But improve the site distance.
We can certainly look at.
Yeah. Improve the site distance. Not necessarily getting rid of the hill, but if you can improve the site distance. And that should be what, so many feet?
It depends on the mile per hour, which for 60 miles an hour is, I don't know if you know it off the top of your head. Yeah. Roughly six to 700 feet, I believe.
Yeah.
It's not my recollection is, is that VDOT has, has worked on improving the vertical curve at that intersection at least once in the past with a pretty significant excavation project. If you look at the, the biography of that right hand bank, you can see that it's not natural.
Yes, ma'am.
If y'all have done that in the past, wants to try and.
Yeah. One of my predecessors, I believe you're correct, is before my time, but I, I think there has been some work done there to improve. So maybe more could be done. I don't know. I haven't, since I've been here, this is the first time it's come up as needing to be done. Okay. Well, I'll thank the board for the, the time speaking tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Pleasure to the board.
I think, I think that we should follow Scott's recommendation and take a note of action.
I second that.
Motion made. Second it. David, we're going to have to skip over you and myself, both. Jerry?
There's, there's no vote for no action.
No? For no action?
No.
We'll move right along. Emergency management report, Trey, please. Mutual aid agreement. No action.
Good evening, board.
Evening, Trey.
Haven't been here in a couple of months. I figured I'd make up with a couple of things for you. The first one is Charlotte Princeville Mutual Aid Agreement. In June of '23, Charlotte County approached Princeville with the Fire Rescue Mutual Aid Agreement. The Mutual Aid Agreement was presented to the Public Safety Committee when the committee met with the Fire Association, August 28th, 2023. Public Safety Committee supported the agreement. The fire chiefs agreed to take the agreement back to the respective department to make a decision at the association meeting. At the September 27th Princeville Area Firefighters Association meeting, all departments agreed to the Mutual Aid Agreement and supported Princeville County executing the document. There was also discussion on approaching other surrounding counties and executing similar agreements along with reviewing the fire departments and districts to ensure the closest departments are being dispatched to assist incidents inside of Princeville County. Basically, just to give you an overview of that is, I'll, I'll use Dalton Heights since Lou's sitting there, you know, making sure that we're getting departments in Charlotte that are closer maybe than our departments to help when there's an incident. And we, we still would use Princeville County agencies also, but getting the closest truck available there, quickest possible. So I'll leave that for y'all's discussion. Do you have any questions on it? And there's also an attachment that gives y'all that agreement if y'all would like to read through it.
There's not much more we, there's not much we do more important than that than getting people assistance as fast as possible.
Right. Absolutely.
Certainly makes good sense.
Communications.
Yeah. And it's, it's not that this doesn't happen already. I mean, it's always been a verbal, just handshake, time agreement, but it's just more of a formality to put it in writing. Counties are becoming more involved in fire rescue and it's just a more of a piece of paperwork now behind the mutual aid agreement. So.
Is that the motion, Ken?
Sure. I'll, I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approve the mutual aid agreement with the county of Charlotte and authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement on behalf of the county of Princeville.
Second it.
Motion made. Second it. Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
And my vote is yes.
Okay. Item number two. In September of 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved the disbursement of the EMS levy funds to each county EMS agency with the contingents he funds started to fund emergency situations such as accident replacement, vehicle motor or transmission replacements, et cetera. In June of '23, Princeville Rescue Squad had a motor, motor failure in a 2011 Ford F-450 with 90,000 miles on it. Princeville Rescue received three quotes and had the motor replaced by Malley Ford of Charlottesville. They have submitted the bill of $20,155.67 for reimbursement using EMS levy contingency funds. In August of '23, Maheron Rescue Squad had a motor failure in a 2005 Ford F-350 with 127,875 miles on it. Maheron Rescue received three quotes and had the motor replaced by Wicked Diesel of Bedford. They have submitted the bill totaling $18,134.40 for 60% reimbursement totaling $10,880.64 of EMS contingency funds. There are currently $2,000, $200,000 in the EMS contingency with the next disbursement scheduled for November, which will add another $100,000 back to the fund. The budget supplement is below. I will note that the bottom line is Hampton Sydney EMS. That's actually supposed to be Princeville Rescue. We have corrected that in, in the notes for Karen. But the, the invoices are attached for your review. And if I have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them
For one, I'm glad the funds are available.
Very, very smart, very smart option.
I'm going to move that the Board of Supervisors approve the request of Princeville Volunteer Rescue and Maheron EMS for reimbursement of the cost of the vehicle motor, replacing for the EMS levy contingency funding and approve their budget supplement and appropriation of funds as noted above.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
And my vote is yes.
And I will tell y'all that motor replacement is 5% of the cost of a brand new ambulance.
That was going to be my question.
New ambulance right now is $420,000.
Wow. Outrageous.
So having that money there to make those smart purchases when the trucks are still in good shape. It's very, very smart. The, the last item I have is the FEMA AFG. In February 23, the county submitted a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant with the help of the CRC on behalf of the Princeville County Firefighters Association to replace outdated and aging thermal imaging cameras. The FEMA AFG is a reimbursable federally funded grant that requires a 5% match by the recipient. The grant, this grant funding will bring all the Princeville County fire departments together with their standardized thermal imaging camera for all structural fire, structural firefighting apparatus. These cameras are vital tools in assisting in search and rescue, search for victims and structural fires, locating hitting fires inside of walls and ceilings without having to cause additional damage to the property. On August 11th, '23, we were notified that the county had been awarded $162,585 from the FEMA AFG for 21 thermal imaging cameras. The Firefighters Association is requesting the county assist with covering the upfront cost of the grant until reimbursement is provided by FEMA. Each department will provide their portion of the 5% match back to the county. If y'all remember, we did this similarly with the AARPACs a, a year ago. I will tell you that this, this grant's going to do more than thermal imaging cameras. The departments have chosen a camera, the grant quote that we used. We're probably going to have somewhere around $60,000 of extra money to try to amend and use in something else standardized throughout the county again. Sorry. You have any questions?
I move the Board of Supervisors approve the request from the Firefighters Association to front the funding needed to purchase the thermal imaging cameras and be reimbursed by FEMA with the 5% matching grants from each fire department and to approve the budget supplement and appropriation in the amount of 162,500 as noted.
Make a note today, Cannon. I'm sorry. The, there's a note on the bottom. It's 162,585. There was a typo on the bottom.
All right. So noted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Thank y'all.
Next, finance and human resource report. Cheryl?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The first item I have for you is the FY24 salary and wages. On September 14th, 2023, House Bill 6001 was passed. This bill included an additional 2% salary increase to state, to state-funded positions effective December 1st, 2023. The FY24 budget included a 2% increase in the pay raise reserve line for all employees. Now that the General Assembly has acted, the board will need to move the funding to the departmental budgets. And they're all listed in the chart.
Move that the board approved the fiscal year 24 budget supplement and appropriate funds outlined above at implementation of the 2% salary increase effective December 1, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
The next item is school board appropriations to authorize a public hearing. On October 4th, the county administrator received a letter from the school board requesting appropriation of $1,763.12, $12.93 to the School Cares Act budget. For this transaction to take place, the board will first have to authorize a public hearing to amend the FY24 county and school budgets by the amount of $1,763.12.93 and then appropriate the same funds. Per Section 15.2-2507 of the Code of Virginia, locality may amend its budget during the fiscal year. However, if such an amendment exceeds the currently adopted expenditures by 1% or more, then the locality must advertise the amendment prior to the public hearing. The county's currently approved budget is for $69,732,747, which means the request from the school exceeds the 1% threshold. And there is a request from Dr. Johnson and we're asking to approve the public hearing for next month.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
The next item is school appropriations, state and federal funds. The Board of Supervisors has received a request from the Princeville County School Board to appropriate the federal and state funds described below for a total of $66,012.37 for the 2324 school year. There is no local match required for this appropriation.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
The Board of Supervisors has received a request from the Princeville County School Board to appropriate the state funds described below for a total of $21,745.32 for the 2324 school year. There is also no local match required for this appropriation.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
David, seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
The next item is insurance recoveries for the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department received payments from BACOR claims totaling $32,513. Department received payments from VACOR claims totaling $32,513 for replacement costs of one of the sheriff's vehicles involved in an accident on July 22, 2023. The Board is asked to appropriate the $32,513 the Sheriff's Department Vehicle Repair Line item to cover replacement costs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made. Who's second? David?
Yes.
You'll vote, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
And the last item I have for you is workers' compensation recoveries for the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department received payments from VACOR claims totaling $10,250.69 for a workers' claim compensation claim of one of the sheriff's deputies injured in the line of duty. The Board is asked to appropriate the $10,250.69 to the Sheriff's Department salaries and wage line item to cover the cost of the deputy's salary while the individual is out of work.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded it. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see what we have here now. Sarah, please. Operation Green Light for Veterans, please.
Last year, the Board participated in the National Association of Counties' Operation Green Light for Veterans, so we are asking the Board if they would like to do that again and light the courthouse green from November 1 through November the 11, and encourage our citizens to also display a green light in the windows in their place of business or residence to show gratitude for all the men and women who serve or have served our country and this community in the armed services, excuse me, armed forces.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded it. Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes also. County Attorney's Report. Terry, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody tonight? All right. The report's very brief this month. We've been working, continue to work on the, trying to update the ordinances for the county. Had a discussion with Animal Control Officer, and also we're still working on the solid waste. Anyway, hope to keep that moving along, you know, so we can get those updated. And one of the major projects, I guess, that I'm working on will have in the table packet, talking about title to county property. So you want me just to wait and we can chat about that then? Alrighty. As far as I know, no one's suing the county. And anyway, anybody have any questions, concerns for me? Alrighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And Administrator's Report, Doug, please.
Before I give my report, as noted on page 117, at the September meeting, staff noted the Board's motion on the restructuring of the planning commission, it didn't include approval of the resolution for the reorganization. So we put that back in the packet, and I would, if the Board is agreeable, I'd ask the Board to formally adopt that resolution, which will bring us down in number from 10 to 9, which is the eight, one for each district, plus the Board rep.
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded it. Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And my vote is yes.
And so my report, just a few things. One, our 2023 annual report, county staff are working with Letterpress on the final draft of the annual report that will be included with the mailout of our real estate and personal property tax bills, just like we did last year. So we're looking to hopefully get that out. And this year, it will include a message from the Board Chair, which we hope to be able to do on an annual basis. Sandy River permit, we received a draft of the Sandy River Water Withdrawal Permit from DEQ. DEQ ran an ad in the Herald on September 20, which started the 30-day public comment period. Building Inspection Software, county staff has kicked off the cloud permit building inspection software project a week ago. Moving forward, there'll be weekly meetings on the project. The project completion date is anticipated to be in December. This is software that will allow folks to submit permits online and be able to get updates via text and email when their inspections improve. So hopefully, it's going to improve customer service with the Building Inspections Department. As Dr. Johnson noted, the Prince Edward County Elementary School, the Virginia Department of Education, has released the School Construction Assistance Program Grant Application Process, and we're working with them and Mosley Architects to make sure that we get that submitted. Hip Park Marketing, we're receiving significant interest on the Hip Park property. The IDA's consultant, Rep. Weiss, is engaged with several data center developers, talking about the site. And I really feel it's not a matter of if, but when for the development of the site. And in November, the IDA will have a presence at a data center conference in Northern Virginia, specifically talked about the Hip Park. Tourism Grant, Prince Edward County applied for a $10,000 micro-business marketing leverage program grant through the Virginia Tourism Corporation. This grant is designed to push business during the off-season, September to March. The Economic Development Tourism Department saw this as an opportunity to promote Prince Edward as a wedding destination. With so many Hampton, Sidney, and Longwood alumni returning to the area to get married, this was a great chance to advertise Prince Edward as a one-stop shop, forever starts in Prince Edward. The couple can get a venue, a dress, the tux, the bridal party attire, food, photographers, maybe even, we know, a band or two, maybe, and hotels, the entire wedding party and guests without having to leave the area. So we'll keep you posted on that. Opioid Grant Application, I've been working with a consultant to submit a grant application to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority for a planning grant that was due by September 30. The planning grant will help determine the feasibility of and planning for a drug treatment court to serve the communities of Prince Edward, Cumberland, and Buckingham. The plan is to prepare the community, assess current services and gaps, look at partners' cooperation, write policies, procedures, develop additional resources. The ultimate goal is to consider applying to the Supreme Court of Virginia, and I know that the Commonwealth attorneys are working on that. Megan Clark's been working with Kemper and Hannah from the other two counties to work on that. If a drug treatment court is determined not to be the highest and best use of resources, we'll look for other plans, including treatment and supporting things like in the jails to help folks that are battling this addiction. But there's a lot of money out there, and unfortunately, you've got to go out and go after it in order to get it. So we're hoping we're going to be successful. And we've got a few things coming up. Let's see. I know Steps has domestic violence fundraiser at the Southern Pines at Wedgewood on the 21st. Paint the Town Purple Alzheimer's Walk will be on the 21st at 10:00 a.m. The Master Gardeners have a lunch and learn at the Ag Building on the 2nd of November. And we just got today that the Piedmont Health District's going to have a WIC Open House and Resource Fair for folks on October 27 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and they'll have prizes, refreshments, tours, and more. So lots of good stuff out in the community, and hopefully, we can, we'll try to help get the word out to folks. That's all I have. Mr. Chairman?
While we got a moment, a little something that we need to maybe check into. I found yesterday a resident of Prince Edward County was attacked by a coyote, was brought into South Side, started rabies treatment immediately. I don't know whether the game commission needs to be contacted, but we have an epidemic of coyotes now. And I know Charlotte County used to have a bounty for a while. I've had numbers of people that have lost calves. Jimmy, I don't know if y'all had any issues down your way with coyotes? Yeah, yeah. That's something we might need to look into. Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Chairman, Prince Edward County had a coyote bounty for many, many, many of the years that I've worked here. And I'm going to say, maybe anybody on the Board long enough to remember when it was, we got rid of it sometime in the last 10 to 15 years because the game department research determined that the bounty did nothing to affect a change in the population of coyotes in the jurisdiction. So they weren't saying, no, don't, or no, you can't, but they, but their research showed that the bounties weren't really effective. We could spend all the money we wanted paying people to hunt coyotes, but it wasn't going to be detrimental to the population. But Animal Control did contact the Department of Wildlife Resources about the situation. Adam responded to the call.
Thank you. Item 17, VACO Voting Prudential.
So the Board will wish to designate its voting delegate and alternate for the VACO Annual Business Meeting. Historically, the Board has designated the Chair as the voting delegate, and the Vice Chair as the alternate delegate, depending upon who is attending VACO. I believe, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, y'all both planning to attend. It's the Tuesday morning business meeting, but we need to have the Board officially designate.
So moved.
I'd like to decline, because I'm going to have to leave. I have to be in Richmond like three, four days in a row for my job. So I'd like to let someone select someone else.
Who else plans to attend?
Cannon, you're on, boy?
I'm going.
I move the Board designate the Chair as the voting.
You're going to hear it?
And Cannon as the alternate.
I would just do it if you weren't available one day.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded it. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I don't know what I'm supposed to vote for myself or not. Let's see.
I'd say skip over 18.
You win the election.
We'll pick up the closed under number 26, Mr. Chair.
Where do we want to move on to now?
So 19 and 20, 19 just correspondence. You've got something from the Piedmont Soulwater Conservation District, their annual report, and South Side Virginia Community College Proud Panther Newsletter, monthly reports. You've got the Animal Control Building Office, the Cannery, Regional Council, and the Visitor Center reports in your packet. Go into the table pack. The first item, item 21, is our resolution for the Personal Property Tax Relief, PPTRA. The county administrator and IT consultant, we've computed the Personal Property Tax Relief Act percentage of tax relief in the Commonwealth for 2023 to be 25.75% of assessed value based on guidelines provided by the Commonwealth. We set it higher artificially last year when the value of vehicles jumped up. They have dropped back down for this year, so we're back to what we call normal. In '21, the percentage was 30.5%. So for those that have been around long enough, this is back when Jim Gilmore was governor, they were going to eliminate the car tax. And each locality was given a slot of funds to help offset the impact of vehicles. Ours is like $1,305,000 approximately. So we compute that as a percentage of the total. And so every year, as the value of vehicles grows, that percentage gets smaller. So the relief this year would be 25.75% that each person, again, that's on the first 20,000 as outlined in that resolution. That's the part that you get the relief on.
Beyond that, you get that relief.
Yep. So we need a motion to approve that, Mr. Chair.
So moved to approve this tax resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded it. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And my vote is yes.
Next item, on page 153, we've received a request from the CRC to write a letter to the Governor requesting additional state funding for planning districts be included in the proposed budget. I will say that we get a tremendous allot out of our Regional Council. Primarily, they help with all our grant applications. We certainly, we bring in much more than we contribute to their budget, but.
Just like one tonight.
Yeah, exactly. So we, you know, we certainly support their efforts, and I would ask the Board just to authorize me to be able to send a letter of support for their budget request.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded it. Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
On page 159, we have a letter requesting the return of unspent funding for FY2223 from the Health Department. This year, it's only $1,148.13. Last year was about $2,385. They'd like to be able to use that to buy two higher back chairs for their receptionist downstairs. Last year, the county replaced the flooring. We've done significant work to upgrade the, I'll say, the aesthetics. They've replaced a lot of the furniture and those chairs, you know. As I told them, I said, we don't like to give money back just to go to the bottom line. Give us something that's going to improve the quality of the clinic. So that's what they've made that request for, and I'd support that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded it. Bill?
Yes.
Dessel?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Next one, property ownership, the county business park. Terry, I want to ask you to go up the button. You want to handle this one? It's a little more complicated.
Whenever I'm handling real estate closings in my office, I explain to folks that the note that goes back to the lender is two or three pages, but the deed of trust is about 19. And I said, do you know why that is? Because an attorney got a hold of it, because they say the same thing, more or less. They say the same thing. During the title search for the lot adjacent to Lowe's in the Prince Edward County Business Park, fronting on US 15, adjacent to the future site of Wawa, there's a section of property that was inadvertently only partially transferred from the county of Prince Edward to the Industrial Development Authority of Prince Edward County. This was referenced in a meeting that was held by the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors in 2009, noting that a deed of correction for this submission should be prepared and recorded. However, this was never completed. For those of you that have lived in the area for a long time, Mrs. Elliott that owned most of that land, she reserved a life interest in two acres, and that's where her house sat. So that's where this parcel, you know, had ended up. She had a life interest. She did sign that over, but that's where this whole thing started. For the details, the Industrial Development Authority of Prince Edward is selling a parcel now known as Lot 2D on a plat in Plat Cabinet A 352, number six. And the question has arisen to the exact owner of the parcel. And an instrument, 2006, 1797, with a plat that was also recorded, you can see a notation along the edge of Highway 15 on the plat that indicates two-acre parcel that I just. mentioned that was the life estate of Mrs. Elliott's house, and she had relinquished that. When they surveyed off Lowe's in the instrument, 2007, 1904, the small overlap area that was shown on the 13 acres acquired by Lowe's shows that the lot line was abandoned. This plat indicates that the Prince Edward County Industrial Development Authority owned that Lot 2D. But in instrument 2012, where a deed of correction, the County of Prince Edward joined in to properly convey all of its right title and interest in the portion of Lot 2B, identified as old lot line hereby abandoned, and being a part of the life estate of Marietta Ellen Elliott to the Prince Edward County Industrial Development Authority, this instrument corrected Lot 2B. And what we need to do is collect, correct Lot 2D. Also, in the instrument, 2007, Lowe's was given an option to purchase Lot 2D, and there's a plat that shows that it was owned by the IDA on the 2D. But in the instrument, 2009, 01862, there are minutes attached from the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors that mentions that the 1.67 acre parcel north of Lowe's was never transferred from Prince Edward County to the IDA, and that a deed of correction was called for, but there was no deed of correction ever entered in the records. So anyway, they are doing their due diligence, buying the lot. So what we need to do is, the county needs to join in with the IDA to transfer the whole title and interest. So that's what we're asking, that the Board consider authorizing County Administrator...
This is the proposed part of the proposed site for the car wash next to the Wawa.
Right, right. And they've asked us to also do an amendment to the contract to add the county as a party, which at this point, we're getting close to closing, but if that's what makes them happy, then we'll do that. A lot of time when you're doing title searches, you'll find somebody else needs to enter in when they do their title work, and we could just do it, but they've asked also to do an amendment, but also ask us to sign part of the deed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Harrison?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Adessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
I just want to thank Terry for doing the due diligence and figuring it out because it wasn't something you were involved with, but you figured out the details, so I appreciate that, Terry.
Sure. Thank y'all.
That's part of the problem, but part of the solution.
That's right. That's right. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, on page 197, Charlotte County, and this is the second item we've had from Charlotte tonight, it's unusual. Charlotte County is holding a public hearing on October 10th to hear input on a proposed boundary adjustment amendment and expansion of Enterprise Zone 48, which is also shared with us in Lunenburg County. Charlotte is seeking to incorporate additional properties and additional incentives for the area near the existing zone located the Heartland Regional Industrial Park and the Charlotte County Industrial Park in Keysville to increase economic growth opportunities. The request for expansion came to Charlotte from the town of Keysville. Any change in the joint enterprise zone requires support from all the members. So one of the other things that we're all facing is this enterprise zone disappears at the end of 2024. We may try to talk to Frank Ruff about trying to extend it. It's not very likely that'll happen, but, you know, I think, I guess, you know, we're trying to utilize it the best we can, but they've only got basically a year and a few months to try to take advantage of the incentives. So, but this time, Charlotte, just like we've done in the past, would ask that we approve the attached resolution in support of their enterprise zone expansion.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Adessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Last item, Mr. Chair, is on page 201, is a closed session. We've got an updated motion there. There are four separate motions, and we really need to read each of these out. I'll be happy to read them for you, and somebody can do that as a motion if you'd like.
All right, sir.
I would move that the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors convene in closed session, A, for discussion and consideration of the annual performance of the County Administrator and the County Attorney pursuant to the exemptions provided for in Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia; 2, for consultation with legal counsel regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel related to an unsolicited proposal for an intergovernmental contract pursuant to the exemption provided for in Section 2.23711A8 of the Code of Virginia; 3, for discussion and consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property at the landfill where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the county pursuant to the exemptions provided for in Section 2.23711A3 of the Code of Virginia; and 4, for discussion concerning prospective business where no previous public announcement has been made pursuant to the exemptions provided for in Section 2.23711A5 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
Actually, if you could make a motion...
I'm going to make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to what was just read.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Adessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Whereas the Prince Edward County Board Supervisor has convened a closed session on this date, pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3712 Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed session was conducted and conformed to Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved, the Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed session to which this certification resolution applies and only such matters were identified in the motion by the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, and considered by the Board. Is there a second?
Second? Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
All right, any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the clauses and shall state the substance of the departure, that judgment has taken place. My vote is no.
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 Cannon?
No.
Odessa?
No.
Bill?
My vote is no.
Mr. Chair, I've got two other quick things. The first, as you know, we're going to the Homestead, back to the Homestead after a two-year hiatus for the Virginia Association of Counties Conference. Good thing is, the Homestead is a great facility. The bad thing is, it's always a jumble to try to get rooms to give in. Now, we are, I think traditionally, the county gets, every county gets three rooms. And it used to be that it was the chair, vice-chair, and the county administrator. But the good thing is, I'm on the insurance board, so I get it, I'm taken care of separately. So the county gets three rooms. The question, and then we've got alternate locations, which are in some of the bed and breakfast around the Homestead.
We're still waiting right here. We haven't, has the Homestead released the range yet?
We're on a waiting list. So the question is, if we only get three, who's the third supervisor? Is it rock, paper, scissors? Is it seniority? How do you, we just need some direction.
I'll happily stay off if you need volunteers to stay off.
Case I collapse.
What I'm talking about, stay off campus, I mean, I don't need to be, I don't need to be sleeping in the facility is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Taking one for the team.
So back home to this year? It's gonna be this year?
Yep.
There's still a chance that we will get all of the rooms, but it's always...
So you're allocated three, but you don't, but this...
But I, and I get, I get one, so it's just, we got, we guaranteed three.
But you are guaranteed three.
And we're on waiting list for others.
The three is all that we need this year, correct?
No, who's going?
Okay.
We got five, right?
So Bill's not going, Harrison's not going, and Davis not going. And Cannon is...
But you just need, but you got them. Do you gentlemen want to let Dr. Pride stay?
But you got them, but you already got it, yeah. If Cannon stays off, you've got one anyway, then you've got it all covered.
You got Lou, Patty.
One, two. We got Odessa, Jerry.
Well, let's hope that we get all rooms.
Yeah.
If you don't, I may not go.
Right now, the room isn't my name, or the safety...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I may not all of it.
It's just, I'm the place holder, just so we can hold the room, but...
I mean, we never had that situation in the past, but that was...
We just want to be prepared, that's all.
They have changed, they've changed some things. Farm Bureau used to do it there all the time, and they're, hopefully have more available rooms when they come out because they've worked some things different, so it may, it may be more.
They've been remodeling, they've been working on a couple years.
I believe they've finished remodeling. And you think about, you know, there'll be, there's 95 counties in Virginia, there'll be 85, 80, 85 with people there, if all of them getting three, then you got the vendors, and you've got the House of Delegates, senators that are there, and the staff, all that stuff, so it gets complicated. Yeah.
Well, just count me in for right now, you know.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
We'll let your alarm run.
Ladies come first, there you go.
There we go. All right, we'll figure it out.
First is Halloween, and we traditionally have a tent table and candy for the board members, any board members who wish to come and participate in handing out candy to all of the hundreds of trick-or-treaters that come do the Main Street Parade, so if you'd like to come and join us.
October the 31st?
October the 31st. The parade starts at four. Our king can get a little tricky, so if you think you might want to do it, factor that into your plans. But I know the Personnel Committee meeting is at three, so we'll get y'all out and talk. But just, and if you want, you can come, if you're a favor person.
And the, the last thing is that, rather than adjourning, I would ask that you recess until October 17 at 5:30, which is the Planning Commission. Ed Moten.
Which is week... Second.
Motion made and seconded. And we're meeting at, at Moten at...
5:30 PM.
And we will feed you. So we need to vote on that, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
All right, any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the clauses and shall state the substance of the departure, that judgment has taken place. My vote is no.
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 Cannon?
No.
Odessa?
No.
Bill?
My vote is no.
Mr. Chair, I've got two other quick things. The first, as you know, we're going to the Homestead, back to the Homestead after a two-year hiatus for the Virginia Association of Counties Conference. Good thing is, the Homestead is a great facility. The bad thing is, it's always a jumble to try to get rooms to give in. Now, we are, I think traditionally, the county gets, every county gets three rooms. And it used to be that it was the chair, vice-chair, and the county administrator. But the good thing is, I'm on the insurance board, so I get it, I'm taken care of separately, so the county gets three rooms. The question, and then we've got alternate locations, which are in some of the bed and breakfast around the Homestead.
We're still waiting right here. We haven't, has the Homestead released the range yet? Yeah.
We're on a waiting list. So the question is, if we only get three, who's the third supervisor? Is it rock, paper, scissors? Is it seniority? How do you, we just need some direction. How you want us to do it?
I'll happily stay off if you need volunteers to stay off.
In case I collapse.
What I'm talking about, stay off campus, I mean, I don't need to be, I don't need to be sleeping in the facility is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Taking one for the team.
So back home to this year? It's gonna be this year?
Yep.
There's a, there's still a chance that we will get all of the rooms, but it's always...
So you're allocated three, but you don't, but this...
But I, and I get, I get one, so it's just, we got, we guaranteed three.
But you are guaranteed three.
And we're on waiting list for others.
The three is all that we need this year, correct?
No, who's going?
Okay.
We got five, right?
So Bill's not going, Harrison's not going, and Davis not going. And Cannon is...
But you just need, but you got them.
Do you gentlemen want to let Dr. Pride stay?
But you got them, but you already got it, yeah. If Cannon stays off, you've got one anyway, then you've got it all covered.
You got Lou, Patty.
One, two. We got Odessa, Jerry.
Well, let's hope that we get all rooms.
Yeah.
If you don't, I may not go.
Right now, the room isn't my name, or the safety...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I may not all of it.
It's just, I'm the place holder, just so we can hold the room, but...
I mean, we never had that situation in the past, but that was...
We just want to be prepared, that's all.
They have changed, they've changed some things. Farm Bureau used to do it there all the time, and they're, hopefully have more available rooms when they come out because they've worked some things different, so it may, it may be more.
They finished remodeling, they've been working on a couple years.
I believe they finished remodeling. And you think about, you know, there'll be, there's 95 counties in Virginia, there'll be 85, 80, 85 with people there, if all of them getting three, then you got the vendors, and you've got the House of Delegates, senators that are there, and the staff, all that stuff, so it gets complicated. Yeah.
Well, just count me in for right now, you know.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
We'll let your alarm run.
Ladies come first, there you go.
There we go. All right, we'll figure it out.
First is Halloween, and we traditionally have a tent table and candy for the board members, any board members who wish to come and participate in handing out candy to all of the hundreds of trick-or-treaters that come do the Main Street Parade, so if you'd like to come and join us.
October the 31st?
October the 31st. The parade starts at four. Our king can get a little tricky, so if you think you might want to do it, factor that into your plans. But I know the Personnel Committee meeting is at three, so we'll get y'all out and talk. But just, and if you want, you can come, if you're a favor person.
And the, the last thing is that, rather than adjourning, I would ask that you recess until October 17 at 5:30, which is the Planning Commission. Ed Moten.
Which is week...
Second. Motion made and seconded. And we're meeting at Moten at...
5:30 PM.
And we will feed you. So we need to vote on that, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
All right, any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the clauses and shall state the substance of the departure, that judgment has taken place. My vote is no.
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 Cannon?
No.
Odessa?
No.
Bill?
My vote is no.
Mr. Chair, I've got two other quick things. The first, as you know, we're going to the Homestead, back to the Homestead after a two-year hiatus for the Virginia Association of Counties Conference. Good thing is, the Homestead is a great facility. The bad thing is, it's always a jumble to try to get rooms to give in. Now, we are, I think traditionally, the county gets, every county gets three rooms. And it used to be that it was the chair, vice-chair, and the county administrator. But the good thing is, I'm on the insurance board, so I get it, I'm taken care of separately, so the county gets three rooms. The question, and then we've got alternate locations, which are in some of the bed and breakfast around the Homestead.
We're still waiting right here. We haven't, has the Homestead released the range yet? Yeah.
We're on a waiting list. So the question is, if we only get three, who's the third supervisor? Is it rock, paper, scissors? Is it seniority? How do you, we just need some direction.
I'll happily stay off if you need volunteers to stay off.
In case I collapse.
What I'm talking about, stay off campus, I mean, I don't need to be, I don't need to be sleeping in the facility is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Taking one for the team.
So back home to this year? It's gonna be this year?
Yep.
There's a, there's still a chance that we will get all of the rooms, but it's always...
So you're allocated three, but you don't, but this...
But I, and I get, I get one, so it's just, we got, we guaranteed three.
But you are guaranteed three.
And we're on waiting list for others.
The three is all that we need this year, correct?
No, who's going?
Okay.
We got five, right?
So Bill's not going, Harrison's not going, and Davis not going. And Cannon is...
But you just need, but you got them.
Do you gentlemen want to let Dr. Pride stay?
But you got them, but you already got it, yeah. If Cannon stays off, you've got one anyway, then you've got it all covered.
You got Lou, Patty.
One, two. We got Odessa, Jerry.
Well, let's hope that we get all rooms.
Yeah.
If you don't, I may not go.
Right now, the room isn't my name, or the safety...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I may not all of it.
It's just, I'm the place holder, just so we can hold the room, but...
I mean, we never had that situation in the past, but that was...
We just want to be prepared, that's all.
They have changed, they've changed some things. Farm Bureau used to do it there all the time, and they're, hopefully have more available rooms when they come out because they've worked some things different, so it may, it may be more.
They finished remodeling, they've been working on a couple years.
I believe they finished remodeling. And you think about, you know, there'll be, there's 95 counties in Virginia, there'll be 85, 80, 85 with people there, if all of them getting three, then you got the vendors, and you've got the House of Delegates, senators that are there, and the staff, all that stuff, so it gets complicated. Yeah.
Well, just count me in for right now, you know.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
We'll let your alarm run.
Ladies come first, there you go.
There we go. All right, we'll figure it out.
First is Halloween, and we traditionally have a tent table and candy for the board members, any board members who wish to come and participate in handing out candy to all of the hundreds of trick-or-treaters that come do the Main Street Parade, so if you'd like to come and join us.
October the 31st?
October the 31st. The parade starts at four. Our king can get a little tricky, so if you think you might want to do it, factor that into your plans. But I know the Personnel Committee meeting is at three, so we'll get y'all out and talk. But just, and if you want, you can come, if you're a favor person.
And the, the last thing is that, rather than adjourning, I would ask that you recess until October 17 at 5:30, which is the Planning Commission. Ed Moten.
Which is week...
Second. Motion made and seconded. And we're meeting at Moten at...
5:30 PM.
And we will feed you. So we need to vote on that, Mr. Chair.
All right. Motion made and seconded, David?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Odessa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
My vote is yes. And our Planning Commission meeting is gonna be...
Patty?
It is the Planning Commission meeting, there's no other meeting.
Did Carl change his Christmas thing from morning to...
Yeah, it's in afternoon, it's got a early morning.
Okay.
I received your last.
I just, I did it too, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that I was...
I just wanted to make sure I hadn't dropped the ball.
I was surprised.